For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to twenty total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For twenty-one to thirty-nine total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for forty-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Interpreters are available for assistance with in-person public comment. Please connect with them if you are in need of services.
(Spanish) There are services for interpretation available to assist in person with public comments. Please, speak with an interpreter if you need these services.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, November 25th, 2025. Please join me for a moment of reflection, and this moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each one of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us reflect and consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Now, before we move on this evening, we want to pause to honor a courageous soul who served our community with loyalty and so much bravery. Canine Spike of the Burbank Police Department. Spike gave his life in the line of duty struck by gunfire this Saturday, November 22nd. Spike recently celebrated his fourth birthday and was known as intelligent, devoted, gentle, off-duty, and tenacious when called to serve. He was often seen at community events embodying the spirit of service and bringing smiles to members of all ages, especially our little ones. Spike was a partner, he was a friend, and he was a hero. He was a member of our police department family, and he put himself on the line for his fellow officers. Let us reflect on his sacrifice, honor his memory, and extend our deepest, deepest sympathies to his handler, Officer Salas, the Burbank Police Department, and all who loved him. May we be inspired by his courage, may his service remind us of the profound bonds between humans and our four-legged protectors, and may his legacy continue in every act of kindness, bravery, and community spirit. Thank you, Spike. Your mission is complete. Rest in peace, hero. May you run free and enjoy all the endless treats you deserve. You will never Thank you, everybody. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, how are you this evening?
Terrific. How are you, Madam Mayor?
I'm okay. I'm okay. Hanging in there. Um, will you please conduct the roll?
Councilmember Anthony?
Present.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Rizotti?
I am here.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
Here.
And Mayor Perez?
I'm also here.
Thank you.
All right. There will be four periods of public comment tonight, and members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment, and must submit cards or call before the comment period begins. The first public comment period is for general comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you're here in person and you wish to speak during this general public comment, you should have submitted or be in the process of submitting a yellow public comment card to our wonderful city clerk right here to my right. If you would like to participate in the general comment period over the phone, you can call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. Additional public comment periods will be available following each report to council this evening, and we also have a Spanish interpreter who will be sitting here if anybody needs services this evening. We apologize, we do not have Armenian interpretation services tonight. We regularly do, but let us know if you need Spanish interpretation before the comment period begins, and if no one needs any, I'll be letting her go home. All right. We now move on to an adjournment. We will be adjourning tonight in memory of Nat Rubenfield, former landlord-tenant and police commissioner and community activist. Nat, Nathan William Rubenfield, was known to friends and family as Nat, who passed away at the age of seventy-eight. A lifelong Californian, he made his home in both Burbank and Temecula, communities he cared for deeply. Born on June 15th, 1947, Nat grew up in the Fairfax District along his older sister Naomi. He graduated from Fairfax High School and went on to attend California State University, Los Angeles, earning a Bachelor's of Science in Law. In 1967, Nat was drafted into the US Air Force, and he served with distinction for three years, attaining the rank of Sergeant and completing tours in Vietnam and in the Philippines as an aircraft mechanic before receiving an honorable discharge. After returning home, Nat joined a debt collection agency that he would eventually acquire and transform into a union adjustment company. He moved the business from Glendale to Burbank, where it thrived under his leadership for four decades. Nat's professional life was guided by fairness, determination, and a deep sense of responsibility to his clients and community. In 1978, while working at the agency, Nat met Alma Hernandez, who would become the love of his life. Beyond his business, Nat dedicated himself to civic service. He served on the boards of the Burbank YMCA, the American Red Cross, the Burbank Temple Manuel, Landlord-Tenant Commission, and Police Commission, among others. A proud Rotarian, he was an active member of the Burbank Noon Rotary Club, serving as club president in 2006. In the late 1980s, Nat fulfilled a lifelong calling to public safety by joining the Los Angeles Police Department as a reserve police officer, where he served for more than twenty-five years. Nat Rubenfield is survived by his beloved wife Alma, his four children, four grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. He will be remembered for his unwavering work ethic, generous spirit, sharp wit, and the joy he found in service to others. His family and friends will forever cherish the mark he left on every community he called home. On behalf of the City Council, our thoughts go out to Nat's family and who I know are here with us tonight. We also give gratitude for his service to the Burbank community. I know it's a lot of in memoriam today. It's a little heavy, but we are, we celebrate in community and we mourn in community. So thank you all for, for being here. We have five announcements to council this evening.
Following our announcements for November 25th, 2025. From now through November 29th, adoption fees for all animals, big and small, are fifty percent off at the Burbank Animal Shelter. Visit the shelter to meet the animals in person or browse all available pets online at burbankanimalschapel.org. Adopt today and help us get them home for the holidays. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Heritage Commission for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2026. The deadline to apply is Monday, December 8th at 5:00 PM. If interested, please apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. As a reminder, any person appointed to fill a vacancy shall hold office for the remainder of the unexpired term. Persons appointed to serve unexpired terms must complete the term before applying to serve on another board, commission, or committee. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email Our Burbank invites residents and businesses to enter the 2025 Outdoor Holiday Decorating Contest. The entry period will close on Monday, December 8th, or once fifty entries are received, whichever comes first. Winners will be revealed on Friday, December 19th, giving everyone in the community a chance to visit the decorated homes and businesses for the holiday season. Winning categories include Best Overall House, Second Place Residential, Third Place Residential, Best Youth Entry, and Best Business Entry. To enter the contest or to learn more, visit Join Little Squirt's Fire Safety Challenge. Hosted by the Burbank Fire Department, elementary and middle school students can learn about fire safety and emergency preparedness by completing a challenge checklist. Become a fire safety champion and claim your cool items from Fire Station 11 by December 19th. For the challenge checklist and more information, visit burbankfire.us or call 818-238-3473. The Parks and Recreation Department invites everyone to kick off the holiday season at the annual Mayor's Tree Lighting on Saturday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 6:30 PM on the steps of Burbank City Hall. This free, family-friendly event will feature festive performances, holiday music, and the official lighting of the City Hall tree. We will also have a special appearance from the one and only Santa Claus. For all event details, visit This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right. We have two presentations to council this evening, and our first presentation is the Presentation of a Proclamation declaring November 25th through December 10th, 2025, Sixteen Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence and International Human Rights Days in the City of Burbank.[1112.63][1112.63](Applause) At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Lynn Lipinski, President of the Zonta Club, to join me at the podium. I would like to also invite Ms. Gloria Salas, because I know when Zonta's in the house in orange.
And actually, I would like to present this special pin to you, so that, and don't lose it.
I get in trouble because I'm also a member of Zonta, and I quite often lose my pins. Thank you. And would either of you like to say a few words?
Gloria's gonna take it for us.
I got the short straw.
Take it away.
The Sixteen Days of Activism marks a global campaign to say no to gender violence. Globally, one in three women experience physical or sexual violence, mostly by an intimate partner. Violence against women and girls is one of the most pervasive human rights violations. According to the California Women's Law Center, on average, more than two women each day are killed by a current or former intimate partner. Women cannot and should not have to fight for safety from violence. While much has been achieved since 1919, women's rights are under siege again. California's current marriage law, as it pertains to children, is unconscionable and a violation of human rights. The Zonta Club of Burbank area has held forums to educate the community on human trafficking. We lobby Sacramento to set a floor of eighteen years of age to marry, and we are active on the Burbank's Domestic Violence Task Force. According to the United Nations Secretary General Antonio Guterres, "New technologies such as AI are creating the conditions to allow new platforms for violence and abuse, normalizing misogyny and online revenge." Violence against women and girls is a complex issue and is perpetuated in many ways. We can't solve this problem alone, so please join us, the Burbank Club of Zonta Burbank Club, to say no to gender violence on December 13th at 9:00 AM at the steps of the Burbank Police Department, at which time we will gather and go around Glen Oaks and up to City Hall. So we invite all of you, no registration required, no fee will be asked or donation, just show up and support us. Thank you.[1297.42][1297.42](Applause)
Thank you, Gloria. Now, if you don't know the Zonta Club of Burbank, their mission is supporting girls and women internationally, and there are chapters throughout the entire world. If you're interested, see one of these lovely ladies to find out more about joining this amazing sisterhood. And now I have a proclamation for you all. Sixteen Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence and International Human Rights Days. Whereas the Sixteen Days of Activism Against Gender Violence, beginning on November 25th, the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, and ending December 10th on International Human Rights Day, is a global call for action to end gender-based violence against women, as it still continues to be the most pervasive human rights violation and global epidemic affecting millions of women and girls of all races and socioeconomic backgrounds in our local communities and worldwide. And whereas, the Zonta Club of Burbank area, chartered in 1936, joins over one, 1,100 members in sixty-four countries as part of Zonta International, which has been working for gender equality for a hundred and five years, by empowering women through service and advocacy. And whereas Zonchians urge everyone to join them in working to end violence against women and girls, no one person, organization, or community can eliminate gender-based violence on their own, but working together to prevent such violence, supporting victims, survivors, and their families, and increasing support for agencies that provide services to those community members is critical to ending gender violence. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim November 25th through December 10th, 2025, as Sixteen Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence and International Human Rights Days in the City of Burbank.[1429.33][1429.33](Applause)
(Inaudible)
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Let's bring up the Zonchians on, on council. They have slowly Sorry, guys. We had a council-giving dinner earlier, so I'm still a little sleepy.
Right here. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Thank you so much.
All right. Let's give Zonta a big round of applause.[1480.83][1480.83](Applause) And before I forget, in addition to all that, I would like to add that the City Hall and our BWP Administration Building down the street will be lit up in orange beginning tonight through December 5th in honor of the Sixteen Days of Activism.[1502.11][1502.11](Applause) All right. Our second presentation this evening is the Presentation of a Proclamation declaring November 1st through 30th, 2025, as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Burbank.[1521.92][1521.92](Applause) At this time, I'd like to invite President Ortega of the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians to join me at the podium. Welcome.[1536.99][1536.99](Applause) President Ortega, thank you for joining us to accept this proclamation, and I'm sure you're gonna share a few words about the Band of Mission Indians and, and what it all means, but I don't want to take too much of your thunder, so I'll let you share. But there's a reason I picked these folks, because we're on their land.
Well, I just want to say, ami atam netoan Rudy Ortega Jr., pasiva atam, tetavia atam. I said hello, everyone. My name is Rudy Ortega Jr. I'm the tribal president of the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians. We're descendants of Mission San Fernando. We come from twenty-six villages from San Fernando, Simi, Santa Creed, and Antelope Valleys. My lineage comes directly from the village of Encino in Situnanga, which is the place of the oak tree. My cousins next to me, Jesus Alvarez, is a tribal senator. My niece-cousin is Crystal Crow on the tribal government, as well as Lucia Afredo from our tribal secretary. Lucia and Jesus come from the village of Tahanga or Tuhanga, the place of the old woman. As well, we all share the village of Chaiwananga, present day where Magic Mountain sits today. And as well as Jesus lineage comes from the village up in Tomi Nanga, which is way up in north of Antelope Valley, Lake Los Angeles. So where we come from, multiple lineages and descendants from multiple villages, as I mentioned, twenty-six, but Burbank shares a heart to us as well, because we have other relatives that share this area that come from our tribe as well. So I just want to share that piece.
Thank you, President Ortega. And what can folks do if they'd like to learn more about the tribe and get involved in a lot of the efforts that you're doing today?
Sure. We, we have, you can visit our website, Totavium, T-A-T-A-V-I-A-M dot U-S. You can go to our site. We're providing free oak trees, elderberry trees, elder trees out to the community through our program, the USDA grant. We have a tribal conservation corps. Youth are from sixteen to twenty-four that wants to learn about native, well, regular conservation corps is a regular Californian conservation corps, but also with native practices. And we have three different organization nonprofits. One is called Pecu Culture Community Services. It helps folks that are finding themselves in emergency or crisis situations. Another one's the Land Conservancy, that we have over six hundred acres of property through the county of Los Angeles. And then the final one is, I'm trying to remember what it was, or Native First Lending, a micro lending company that we have.
Thank you for sharing that, and it is my honor now to present you with this proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, whereas the City of Burbank honors the history and enduring contributions of Native American, Alaska Native, and Indigenous people. And whereas the city further recognizes the sovereignty of tribal nations, including the state-recognized Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians and Gabarlinio Tongva Tribe, and affirms the importance of protecting Indigenous cultural traditions, sacred places, and languages. And whereas, Native American Heritage Month, observed annually during the month of November, provides an official opportunity to honor the histories, cultures, traditions, and invaluable contributions of Native American, Alaska Native, and Indigenous people in Burbank and across the entire United States. And whereas, the city encourages all residents, community groups, and educational institutions to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities, and true partnership that honor the Tongva people, the Fernandino Totavium Band of Mission Indians, and all native communities. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim November 1st through 30th, 2025, as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Burbank, and I encourage all residents to honor the rich history and significant contributions of the Native and Indigenous peoples of our land. Thank you.[1783.85][1783.85](Applause) Thank you.[584.49][584.49](applause) And I'll just add one more thing while y'all are still here. I will say, it has been an honor to work with President Ortega throughout my mayorship and discuss the ways, we're only beginning, the ways we can begin to partner as a city with our local tribes, and the way we can cultivate a lot of that sustainability, the work with youth. And I'm just honored that you decided to meet with me and that we'll continue to work together in that. Thank you.[632.16][632.16](applause) All right, thank you. All those are all our presentations. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have two items. The first item, I'd like to call up our Library Services Director, Eric Lashley, and he's going to provide a brief status update on our new library/civic center project.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel. I'd like to wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Eric Lashley, Library Services Director. Tonight, I want to give an update on the new library-public plaza project. At my last update, I reported that the city had hired Moca Services as our project management firm. Moca began work August 1st, and they hit the ground running. Moca immediately conducted interviews with the staffs of the library, finance department, and management services. We've established a weekly check-in meeting with me, the Moca team, and Public Works. We've surveyed all the employees from the three departments, and we had a very high return rate. Moca has engaged with HR and A advisors to work with Jennifer Becker and her staff to work through the financing of the project. Agency Artifact is our landscape architectural firm to come up with conceptual plans for the plaza, and the Robert Group has assisted us with our community engagement efforts. On October 7th, Moca led a staff visioning session with the executive directors, staff of the library, management services, and finance. Out of that visioning session, we developed our guiding principles. There are four: community, beautiful, flexible, and safe. We always want to keep the community in mind. This project is for the community. That's what is in our forefront. It's going to be beautiful. The plaza is going to be beautiful. The building is going to be beautiful. It's going to be flexible, and ultimately, it will be safe for the public. We also established our project drivers. We're going to be fiscally responsible and sustainable. We're looking at the long-term vision of the project. We're always thinking about buildings, operations, and maintenance. It's going to be purpose-built, a state-of-the-art facility, and my favorite, it's going to be the best library in the world. Currently, Moca is test-fitting our programming and square footage requirements and cost estimates for the library, the parking garage, and the plaza. We have determined that the library will go at the corner of Glen Oaks and Olive. The parking structure will go at the corner of Glen Oaks and Orange Grove, and the plaza will start here at Third Street, going up to the new library bordered by Olive. Moca is working with the City Attorney's Office and our purchasing department on drafting a request for qualifications for the progressive design-build team. We launched our community engagement efforts on October 29th during the World Series, and we still had a good turnout, and the Dodgers won. With that, we've also launched a new website. So if you cannot go to any of our public events, you can go to newburbanklibrary.com, and you can do a survey, you can put your comments on that website. We've already had three pop-up community engagement events, at the Dia de los Muertos event, at the Burbank Book Festival, and at the Holiday in the Park. We've already had thousands of stickers where people can tell us what amenities they want in the new library and the plaza. We have a calendar of events on our website, and our next event is Thursday, December 11th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Central Library. We'll be doing targeted focus groups for teens, seniors, residents with disabilities, parents with preschool children, and residents where English is their second language. We've also done presentations for the city's Infrastructure Oversight Board and the Sustainable Burbank Commission, and are scheduled to meet with the Cultural Arts Commission in January. I want to give a big thank you to the staff of the Finance and Management Services Department and Library for all their participation in our interviews and our surveys. I want to thank the Planning Department staff and the City Attorney's Office for their support and guidance throughout the project. And also want to give a special thanks to Damian Skinner and Ling Von Su from the Public Works Department for stepping in after the retirement of Ken Berkman. They've been wonderful to work with, and it breaks my heart to actually say that.[927.13][927.13](laughter) That's my update, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lashley. Any brief questions? No?
Just a brief thank you for all the work that you've put into this. You're relatively new to the role, and you jumped in with both feet and have been working on this project, and it's moving quickly, and really appreciate all you're doing, and all the folks that you've mentioned.
Thank you. Y'all, I have my one-year anniversary next week.
Yeah, it's been a year. I remember, you started around the time I became mayor.
That's right.
So thank you for everything, Mr. Lashley, and thank you for the project moving forward. I see you at every community event out there, getting that feedback from folks, and congrats on the new bookmobile.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, one more item. I'd like to call up our police chief to provide an update on the incident that occurred over the weekend that resulted in the tragic loss of our K-9 officer, Spike.
Welcome, Chief.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel, Staff, good evening. Rafael Quintero, Police Chief. Give you a quick update as far as, first of all, give you an overview of the incident, a quick investigative update, just acknowledgement of the people, the amount of resources and support that we had, and then I'll also mention our intentions for a ceremony. On Saturday, November 22nd, at approximately 6:40 PM, Burbank officers conducted a traffic stop near Buena Vista and the 5 freeway. During the stop, the passenger fled on foot, and based on observations at the scene, we suspected that the suspect may be armed. A containment was established and additional resources responded, including our K-9 and K-9 Spike. Officers began conducting a systematic search of the densely brushed area for the suspect. During the search, Spike located the suspect, and he was immediately met with gunfire, where he unfortunately succumbed to his injuries. The suspect was then located through air support and additional units, as additional units from the Glendale PD, Pasadena PD, CHP, and also our SWAT team responded. Crisis negotiators made repeated attempts to communicate, and multiple less lethal options were used. The suspect continued firing at officers, striking our armored vehicle, and attempted to escape while still shooting. Officers returned fire. The suspect was ultimately taken into custody and pronounced deceased at the scene. A handgun was recovered, and no officers or community members were injured. Quick investigative update on this, as far as we're receiving requests from the media and other people within the community trying to get an identification as far as who this individual was. All I ask is for everyone's patience as we are working with the coroner's office in trying to positively identify the individual. As soon as we have that information, we will be releasing it via a press release as appropriate. The, think for me, the outpouring of support from the community as reflected by the memorial out has been overwhelming. It's hard not to get emotional. It really is. And, you know, it's unfortunate that this tragic incident happened and, you know, the loss of our beloved K-9 partner happened. And I mention that because as you walk around the police station, kind of that overall somber feel, I think what's often overlooked is the bright spots. The bright spots in how our personnel responded, and when they were met by gunfire, how brave they are, how they remained, you know, when bullets flying composed and restrained, and the level of force that was used to stop that threat. And I want to make special note of that because it's difficult, and this job is difficult. You've had me up here before, kind of describing the stresses of the profession. The incidents, this was a routine traffic stop, no different than any other traffic stop we make. We make hundreds, you know, over the course of a couple of days, thousands over the course of a year. And the percentages, at least associated within our community, as far as that actually lead to this type of incident, are very minimal, right? Point 00 something percent. And the fact that an officer, by the grace of God, an officer was not seriously injured or killed, I am very grateful. And a lot of, you know, the reason why our officers are alive today has to do, obviously, with Spike, who we are celebrating and acknowledging up here. But at the same time, I also want to acknowledge everybody that kind of responded out there that night, from Glendale PD to Pasadena PD to the California Highway Patrol, and them lending us their assets, the use of their armored vehicles and their personnel that showed up. Some probably weren't even requested, but, you know, in the times of these types of moments, the world shows up. And that is part of the reason why we were successful. The other is, you know, the aftermath, and things that we don't necessarily anticipate that I think that we are not the best at, you know, that wellness piece, how we process these emotions that everybody is feeling, because everyone processes it in their own way. And I can tell you that, as an organization, we've already done that, we've begun that, we're having critical incident debriefs, we've been conducting them this week, we'll be conducting them throughout the week. And again, you've heard me mention this before, the importance of that, and maintain, ensuring that it's not just a one-time incident, but we continue that through the remaining part of the year and provide that level of support for our personnel. I'd also like to thank the Burbank Police Foundation, you know, behind the scenes, definitely strong supporters, up front, the Burbank Police Officers Association, on behalf of the men and women, making sure that they have the resources. And then you, Counsel, you know, your emails, your phone calls, your messages, just saying, "What can I do?", means a lot. City staff, everybody here, getting emails, messages, also from the city managers, also means a lot. And I think it's important to say that out publicly, because at times, given what's going across the region, you know, and not hearing it is, you kind of can get jaded. And that is not the feeling that we have. The outpouring has been tremendous. Memorial service planning, so I know that everyone has been asking. And so as of right now, we definitely intend to do something. We're hoping that we are able to do something next week. We will be meeting tomorrow to have a discussion. As soon as we have some type of date, we will let you know. But the intention is to do something to recognize, to acknowledge Spike for the hero that he was in, you know, giving his life to preserve the life of one of our officers. And the last thing that I'll say, I'm going to read the K-9 pledge, which kind of reflects the heroism of Spike, and that his life was not in vain. "I will lay down my life for you and expect nothing but love in return. I protect all officers with my life and would gladly take a bullet in their place. I am sent in to find lost children and fugitives on the run. I am first sent in and often the last to leave. I protect and serve and would die for any and all officers. I only ask for love and care."[1441.23][1441.23](end of transcript) Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any brief questions, comments? Counsel Ramon's.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you. I've never heard what you read before, so it's definitely touching for all of us, but I deeply appreciate your leadership, the whole entire department. As we watched that night, it was very difficult in not knowing what was happening and what could have happened. So, you know, unfortunately, Spike was the victim in all this, but we're very thankful that none of our men and women got injured that night. So thank you for everything you've done. There's one question that I've had multiple people ask, if Spike was wearing a vest? And I know the answer, however, if you can share with the public kind of a procedure if he was or was not wearing a vest.
I appreciate that comment, and you're absolutely right. And I did forget to mention that, the yes, he was. All of our dogs have ballistic vests to protect them. As luck would have it, unfortunately, in this circumstance, it got right under the vest, and, you know, nothing that we could do. The other thing that keeps coming up, as far as a question from the community, as far as just our overall tactics and, you know, how we deploy these dogs. The dog was not deployed on an armed individual. We had no reason to believe at the time when the dog and the search team went out to try to locate this individual and the suspect, that he was armed. And so as the search team with the dog went out to try to deploy, that's when we were met with gunfire.
Thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, and I concur with your sentiments. The outpouring of love and support from the community is, it's Burbank. Burbank is always there, and we've certainly felt it. We hope the entire department feels it, because I know it's a rough time for everybody. And I'm incredibly grateful for each one of our officers and the response to this incident. I agree, I'm glad nobody else was hurt, but this is very, very hard for us as a community, and we're with you. And I will say thank you to the community. If you're interested in continuing to find out how you can support, the Burbank Police Foundation's a wonderful resource. Reach out to them. And I just want to say I'm grateful to our neighboring cities as well, who have reached out, the Mayor of Glendale, the Mayor of Pasadena, who've reached out to share their condolences and their support for whatever we need as well. Thank you. All right. With that, now is the time for general public comment. I'll be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who's next in line to speak. In order to keep public comment moving, and in a timely fashion, we have a designated seat here in the front row for speakers who are up next, right here. A timer is available on the podium, and this is also the last call for anybody who wants to turn in cards, or anybody who needs interpreter services. Seeing none, free to go home. Well, you're free to let them know that they're free to go home. See, persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on this report following this segment. Please state your name for the record, correct me if I mispronounce your name, and let's get started. No additional comment cards will be accepted at this time. Madam City Clerk, what is the total number of comments?
We have six cards and two people on the phone.
All right, there being eight public comments total, in line with counsel policy, everybody will get three minutes to speak. My first speaker is Jeff Ferguson, followed by Mark Scroggs. Welcome, Mr. Ferguson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Jeff Ferguson, and I'm excited to express my interest in serving on the Art in Public Places Committee. As a longtime resident of Burbank and owner of Magnolia Parks Runout Groove Records, I sincerely appreciate our community's vibrant culture and artistic heritage. My background includes a Bachelor of Arts in Communications from Cal State Fullerton and Masters in Business Administration. Professionally, I've spent almost 30 years of experience in marketing and brand management, having worked with global corporations to drive revenue growth and enhance market exposure. In my spare time, I organize the very successful Magnolia Park Food Truck Fridays and Holiday in the Park, which we just finished, our biggest one ever. Public art plays a really crucial role in fostering community spirit and engagement, and I aim to leverage my marketing and community outreach skills to promote and support impactful art projects that respect, reflect, and are diverse culture and... and enhance our public spaces. I'm passionate about contributing to the cultural enhancement of Burbank and look forward to the opportunity to serve on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, thank you for your application. Our next speaker is Mark Scroggs, followed by Diana Pulver.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Mark Scroggs. First, I'm gonna go, go more positive. I want to thank, um, everybody on the Magnolia in the Park event last Friday night, it was great, it was a great time for everybody. I also appreciate having the shuttles. I know we're at the, the library, we're in the Vista Library, and it was very well-used. So, first, thank you on that. Um, put my glasses on. I've mentioned this before in, in meetings, um, I want to invite everyone, and particularly those working in the entertainment industry, to check out the revised committee for the First Amendment. Um, if you don't know, the First Amendment, it gets thrown around, but includes these areas, which are important to our city and actually to our meetings, if you look at it, freedom of speech, religion, the press, the right to assemble, and to petition the government. Now, only members of the entertainment industry can join it, but anybody can watch, everybody can watch the videos online, they're very informative videos on, on motivating people, how to organize, how to peacefully protest, and that sort of thing. And now, it's been, there's the last couple have been on censorship and, um, dealing with corporate mergers, in particular, they're talking about Warner Brothers and getting people involved, um, with this whole situation. So, you want to share that. The website's www COMMITTEEFORTHEFIRSTAMENDMENT.COM. If you sign up and don't hear from them in a reasonable amount of time, then email COMMITTEE@committeeforthefirstamendment.com, because they're kind of short-staffed. Um, they're also on Instagram at 1ACommittee. So, um, the committee encourages people, this is through Jane Fonda, the, the person who revised it, to, for creative, nonviolent, and non-confrontational protest. Um, if you think about last weekend in Monrovia, when, at the Home Depot, people went to protest ice raids by buying little ice scrapers for seventeen cents, then returning them, screwing up Home Depot because they were, for their lack of help with, with the whole situation, that's the sort of thing that they do. So, um, you know, with Thanksgiving, I said, you thank for all the rights we have and everything we have. That's what we, we need and is appreciated, so I just want to say happy Thanksgiving. Please join, if you're watching, I just want, you know, I told people, you know, to do this, so, thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Diana Pulver, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Diana Pulver. I'm here to ask that you continue to not impose additional rent caps or rent registry, as it will cause an additional financial burden to an already strained economy that everyone is facing. Like many housing providers, I have an older building, but I refuse to be a slumlord. Whenever I can, I try to improve it with upgraded electrical, plumbing, AC heating, flooring, or whatever is needed. Increased costs in all these areas is having a substantial impact on my bottom line. Like many business people, I went into business to provide for my family. I tried to keep my losses to a minimum. AB1482 is sufficient and fair. Please stick to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Joe Pimienta, followed by Terry Friedman.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, staff, and everybody present in the chamber. Uh, my name is Joe Pimienta, and I am a homeowner, and I'm also a participant with the Burbank Tenant Union. Uh, now, this is the, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so in recognition of Thanksgiving, first of all, I just want to say that, like, again, expressing the gratitude, but also really expressing the need for land back, free Palestine, and of course, abolish ICE. I think that that is really important to remember as we continue into a very important holiday. Now, usually, I like to bring up issues that are happening within our community regarding tenant situations, but today, I'm going to spend my time complaining. I'm going to complaining, I'm going to complain about the Burbank Fair Housing PAC. First and foremost, they have already proven that they like to put their money into preventing more tenant protections, as opposed to continuing to maintain their buildings. Secondly, they made it very clear where they, where their preferences are. They like to make sure that they are, they are securing their own future, meaning the right, the rights and the concerns for other people who cannot afford to have their own home comes second. Uh, lastly, they are a PAC, so 2026 is an election year, so we better be careful and be considerate as into where they could, where they can be considering putting their money, and what kind of people are they going to be supporting. Just something to keep, to keep into consideration, since there are going to be three seats available. Uh, and, uh, moving on with something like that, um, so, I just also just want to bring up that, uh, the Burbank Tenant Union does not endorse political candidates, rather, what we do is that we send a questionnaire, ask them what are our concerns, and we ask them to answer honestly, and then we post those, regardless of whether or not they lie. So, we do not, we do not support anybody, but we just tell people, this is what, this is what these tenants are, this is what these candidates are endorsing when it comes to housing policy. Um, and then just flat out, speaking of lying, they lie. Burbank Fair Housing PAC lies. Here's how they lie. First of all, uh, they say that a lot of Burbank Tenant Union members do not live here, which is just false, a lot of us live here, this is what we call home, that's why we're fighting so hard, it's in order to stay within our home. Uh, the other thing that they lie about is that, um, I don't know if you saw this, but there was a video circulating where they were saying that we bust people in. Now, if they want to speak metaphorically, uh, yeah, we do tell people that live in the city of Burbank to come in and show up, so I guess that's how we do that, but if they mean it literally, ah, I would love the idea of being able to afford anything like that. But, it does kind of bring into question that, um, either A, they are willingly lying, or they heard a rumor and do not have the decency to actually verify that rumor, regardless of how it, uh, regardless of what, what it may be, because just simply they didn't bother to verify. Uh, lastly, you know, just, I just want you to remember that, uh, all those, all that money that they're putting into the, into that, uh, into that PAC, you know, tenants paid for that, because that's how they make their, that's how they make their money. So lastly, with the last, with the last minutes, uh, happy Thanksgiving, stop prioritizing cars, and trans lives matter.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Terry Friedman, followed by Eric Hawke with the Burbank Community Band.
Hello, Counsel. Uh, first, I want to let everyone know that the Waste Warriors Program has open registration right now. I am a very proud graduate of the program from last year. Um, it is a free, uh, once-a-year program offered to residents, um, that takes place, eight classes to educate people on how, uh, waste is produced and managed in our city and the limitations of recycling. Um, it's something that impacts every one of us, whether or not we are aware of how, what happens to something after we throw it away or try and recycle it, you're still part of the system, and it's a beautiful program that helps to educate us as to be responsible members of the society. Um, also, in light of the growing concern of food insecurity, uh, amongst our neighbors, I wanted to highlight some local nonprofits, um, that I had asked if Council was able to contribute to at a previous meeting. Um, first off, um, I'd like to ask if the city can promote these nonprofits in our socials routinely, perhaps monthly, to raise awareness around the, um, the resources available to our community members who need support, as well as to provide an opportunity for members who are trying to get involved and volunteer and give back. Um, it's a win-win, no matter what side of the coin you're on, and one day, you're on one, and another day, you might be on the other. Um, so while always looking for donations, the Burbank Temporary Aid Center, um, is especially seeking volunteers. Um, in the past two times I've dropped off lately, they have had only one person there, so they would definitely love to have some more locals coming in to help manage the increase in donations, donations and the increase in demand for, uh, services there. Uh, their website, if you're interested in volunteering, is burbanktemporaryaidcenter.org. And if you are a low-income resident needing support, you can also go to their website to fill out forms in advance of actually showing up. Also, the YMCA, which normally did every other Thursday, has increased to every Thursday morning at nine thirty AM, um, and for that, you can just show up. You can even show up every week, whereas the Burbank Temporary Aid Center does restrict you to once a month, uh, receiving. And you can also reach out to call or email to see if they need support for volunteers or donations. They're still adjusting to the needs as they expand their service. Uh, a third nonprofit in the city is Esperanza Health and Wellness Center. They offer some, uh, limited amount of grocery items weekly, um, and in order to, um, access service, you can go to their website, esperanza, E-S-P-E-R-A-N-Z-A, healthandwellnesscenter.com, to reach out to, uh, coordinate the times that you can go to pick up, as well as to drop off donations. They are also always accepting donations, they are also a partner with many, um, organizations across Southern California, and so, uh, if they have something that they can't use, they can always reroute it to others. They said they particularly always see a need for infant items like diapers and, um, just baby supplies outside of formula, like clippers and bottles. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our last in-person speaker is Eric Hawke with the Burbank Community Band. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, hey, and a very pleasant good evening to the wonderful members of the Burbank City Council, terrific city staff, and others who've taken time out of their evening to participate in, uh, in this evening's, uh, meeting. Uh, for the record, again, my name is Eric Hawke, I'm the current president of the Board of Directors of the Burbank Community Band. And just a quick summary, uh, the musicians of the community band have been working hard to spread joy and cheer, uh, these past weeks. The Friday before Halloween, which may now feel like it was a year ago already, but the band provided a special preview concert, uh, at the Jocelyn Adult Center for about fifty or sixty, uh, very happy folks at the end of that. Um, on Saturday, the twenty-fifth, the band had its third annual Halloween concert, had a great performance, complete with videos accompanying the music at First Christian Church of Burbank. Uh, the band is still quite amazed, uh, that the first concert of our 2025-2026 season was launched by a wonderfully framed certificate of recognition presented to the band by the, uh, uh, City Council through Mayor Perez and Vice Mayor Takahashi, honoring the musicians and the band's eighty-fifth anniversary. Uh, we had an annual costume contest, which had more members of the community participate than in any previous year. Uh, two weeks ago, uh, the band participated in its longest-running tradition of performing for the city of Burbank as part of the Veterans Day Ceremony at McCambridge Park, and this is a ceremony that, uh, that the band really does enjoy performing at, uh, and good seeing some of the great folks there, uh, when it was being happening. Um, with the time remaining, I will speak briefly of the band's final performance of this calendar year. On Saturday, December the twentieth, the Burbank Community Band will have a real fun show. Uh, this will be the, our annual December holiday concert. We have some fun pieces planned, uh, including Irving Berlin's White Christmas Fan Fair for the Festival of Lights, and Vince Guaraldi's, uh, Charlie Brown Christmas, as well as even a really fun sing-along, uh, and you'll know all the tunes, I assure you. Um, this free performance is on Saturday, December the twentieth, uh, will be back at First Christian Church of Burbank at Sixth and Angelino. Um, and if for whatever reason you cannot make the Saturday afternoon performance, or if, uh, you just would like to see us more than once, as we'd love to see you all more than once, if possible, um, we are having another preview concert, uh, the day before, this will be on Friday, December the nineteenth, at ten thirty in the morning at Jocelyn Adult Center at Olive Avenue and Griffith Park Drive. Uh, if you've not seen the community band perform before, I really encourage you to come out, uh, to one of the shows. Our conductor, Michael Stanley, is leading the band in some really wonderful, marvelous pieces. So, thank you, have a happy Thanksgiving, and hope to see y'all real, real soon. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have little flyers.
Thank you. All right, that being our last public comment, uh, in person, we will now go to the phones.
The first caller is Mercedes Cooper.
Hi, Mercedes, you're on with the Burbank City Council, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Mercedes Cooper, and I serve on the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission. I'm calling tonight to express support for the proposed Cultural Art Affairs Supervisor. Um, Burbank's cultural landscape is on a tremendous incline, our arts organizations, public art installations, community events, and cultural programming continue to expand. And the Burbank Parks and Rec Team is totally awesome, and they do a tremendous job at being the glue, uh, between these initiatives, but this position provides an opportunity to think next level. It is an luxury, it's essential infrastructure for a city that values the growth of its creative community. The Cultural Affairs Supervisor will provide critical leadership that's currently spread across multiple roles, such as managing our city grants program, building relationships with nonprofit organizations and artists, managing public art projects, overseeing cultural facilities, developing strategic partnerships, and ensuring our arts programming reflects our current community needs as well as our future dreams. This position will also serve as a vital liaison to our commission, helping us work more effectively with staff to advance Burbank's cultural goals. From our entertainment industry heritage to our thriving local art scene, this position ensures we continue that legacy and properly steward the cultural resources that our community deserves. I hope that you will favorably, um, move forward with this position as an investment in Burbank's cultural vitality and our creative economy. Thank you so much for your consideration, and I also just want to say for the listeners that the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission meets monthly on the second Thursday of every month, will resume our meetings in January, if you'd like to join us at nine AM. And to learn more about us, you can find us at burbankarts.com, as well as a full calendar of upcoming cultural arts programming. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you for your call.
The last caller is Kristi Malouf.
Hi, Kristi, you're on with the Burbank City Council, you have three minutes.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members and staff. I just want to offer my heartfelt condolences to the men and women of the Burbank Police Department, um, in honor of Canine Spike. It's very difficult this time, and it was a beautiful tribute you gave Canine Spike. And any other, uh, topics I was going to discuss, I will wait for another time, but Canine Spike was a true hero. Thank you, thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you for your call, and thank you for the condolences. There being no further public comment, we now move on to, uh, oh, I declare the general public comment period closed, and we, we now move on to, uh, responses, seeing none from staff, council. Who would like to respond first? Vice Mayor Takahashi.
I don't normally, but first, I'll do that tonight. Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you to those who came out tonight to speak, um, on this Thanksgiving week, on a holiday week, appreciate you. Appreciate those who've reached out during the week, um, both email and person, on the phone, and, um, to reflect the chief's comments, um, just appreciate all of the love and, um, community that has come out in support of, um, our lost Officer Spike, and also to his handler, Officer Solis, and, um, actually, I would call him his partner, as handler, and, um, to all of the department and the whole city as grieving. Um, so, uh, lots of great comments tonight about community activities, thank you for sharing that. Um, Mr. Ferguson, thank you for your introduction, we'll get to that piece in a minute, but I wanted to also thank you and all the folks on the Mag Park Association Board for putting on the Holiday in the Park. You did a great job, it was the biggest holiday in the park ever, and, uh, you did fantastic, so thank you to everybody. Please extend my thanks to everybody on the, on the board, anyone else who was involved who wasn't on the board, I'm sure there were other volunteers, too. Uh, Mr. Scroggs, um, thank you for sharing, uh, the awareness around the Committee for First Amendment, I'll take a look at that, and also for commenting on the shuttles. This was the first year that we used the shuttles for the Holiday in the Park, and I've also heard from others that it went really well, there were, actually, it was a higher demand than expected, so, um, it was a, it sounded like it was a good, good thing, so please give your feedback to also our Community Development Department so that they can know, too, about your experience, because I'm sure they'd be interested. Um, Ms. Friedman, thank you for sharing about, uh, the Waste Warriors Program. Um, it's a really great program, it's free to the community, and you learn a lot about, uh, what, how things actually work. It's pretty fascinating, a little depressing sometimes, but really fascinating. And then to the point about the food insecurity, um, BTAC volunteers, YMCA, by the way, I went to the YMCA volunteering, uh, handout last Thursday, we were able to hand out turkeys that morning. So, that's a really great opportunity to volunteer, and I had not heard about Esperanza Health and Wellness Center, I'll look into them. And then to your point about sharing that, I, I agree, we need to share that out. But I also think that one thing that we forget is that when, um, when there's something that happens, there's a lot of output in the community, outpouring of support, um, but, uh, after a while, that support sometimes starts to wane, but the need doesn't wane. And so it's important to remember that, uh, these opportunities for volunteering are ever-present, and while the Spike incidents might remind us of the importance of volunteering, that they're always in, in need, so thank you for reminding us that. And then lastly, for Mr. Hawke, uh, the community band, thank you, always sharing with that. Um, unfortunately, I'm going to miss the holiday concert, I'm so disappointed, but I did manage, I did come to the Thanksgiving, or the, uh, Halloween one, and that was a really fun time. If, if y'all haven't been to the community band performances, it's like a If y'all haven't been to the community band performances, it's like a four-D performance. It's not just music. It's video and it's audience participation and there's going to be a sing-along. So, it really is amazing. All-volunteer opportunity that really kind of shines bright in our Burbank community. So, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Takahashi. Councilor Anthony.
Thank you for everyone coming out. It's kind of a slow evening, not too much on the docket, but do appreciate everyone coming out consistently. You know, the evening has been somber and to Nathan's family, thank you for sharing him with us for so many years. He'd be the first to tell you what that service means. You know, we in Burbank, we take seriously when an officer falls in the line of duty. Look at all the work and effort done to honor Matthew Pavelk over the years and the scholarships and the remembrance and not letting go of why we honor those who have served. So, it's no surprise, no surprise, that the community has come out. If you haven't been, you can come down to the Police and Fire Building, right there on Third and Orange Grove. There is a makeshift memorial has been set up. If you haven't seen it yet, it is amazing to behold. Please do take a minute in your day and come down. Lastly, Mayor, that was a very excellent proclamation for the Band of Tatavium Indians. I rarely see new and cool stuff happen. I think, I think I've seen it all, but that was incredible for the whole crew of them to come down and take that honor. That was inspiring.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Councilor Rizotti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank Ms. Solis for being here tonight and with Zonta and always giving us a reminder of various things that they focus on. And this, and this one is gender violence. Mr. Lashley, thank you for giving us the update on the library. It's going to be amazing. Can't wait for that. To our police chief, thanks for the update. And just everyone in the department that puts their lives on the line for us every day. We thank them. Everyone in law enforcement that takes that oath. It's times like this when you really start to, it brings it home. So, we will memorialize Spike hopefully next week, and I look forward to that. Holiday in the Park was, Mr. Ferguson, fabulous, fabulous. It was, it was so big, I didn't even make it all the way through. But it was really, it had something for everyone. So, congratulations on that. I know that was a huge undertaking and a big effort. Mr. Hawke, thank you for always coming and letting us know about the community band and inviting us and providing that for the community. It's a wonderful gift that you guys have. And then lastly, Nat Rubenfield, I, over the years, in my service, I've, if you've served, you, you've always run into Nat. He was always there to help and to give and support. What a wonderful, wonderful community member. And he will be missed. It was nice to see his wife, Alma, here tonight. And, you know, it's, it's people like that that really make the community what it is. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, oh my gosh, Councilmember Mullins. I was about to say Councilwoman Takahashi. Why do I?
We're just, we just, yeah, we crossed.
I don't have an excuse anymore. That was a pregnancy excuse. Now I've got nothing.
That's okay. I knew exactly you meant me. So, no problem.
I have the, I slept three hours and I have a new one.
You have a good, you have a good excuse. Yeah, I just want to join what all of you have said. First, I do want to start with the Rubenfield family and thank them for being here tonight and thank, thank all of them, especially Alma and Paul and Jonathan and Debbie and Cecilia for sharing him all these years. Nat was a dear friend of mine and my family, and he definitely was a man who loved serving his community. He loved Burbank. He truly gave so much of his life to the Burbank community. So, I do thank him for doing that and I thank his family for sharing him with us. He got me to join the Rotary, you know, for years, and I couldn't say no to Nat because when Nat tells you to do something, it was like, you better do it or else. So, I do want to thank them for being here tonight with us. Congratulations to the proclamations that we give out tonight. So, that's always nice to see the Zantas coming in and also the tribe coming in here tonight. That's wonderful. Mr. Ferguson, you always here, show up, speak, and I do appreciate you coming here tonight and speaking before us. And we will address the item when it comes up. And I do want to also congratulate all the hard work for the event. And there wasn't anyone that I read on social media that had any negative comment. And this is, this is very unusual because somebody's always going to say something went wrong. But kudos to all of you. Positive, positive feedback. So many people. And I don't know how everyone was able to fit in that parameters you set up, but great job. Thank you for all the hard work and for everyone in Mag Park. Same, Mr. Scrogg, always good information. Diane, thank you for coming. I think she's gone. I was, and Joe, for always reminding us what we need to look at and be aware of. And Terry, thank you, you two always show up and talk to us about sustainability. So, I appreciate that very much. And for reminding us about volunteering for our nonprofit organization. That is something, especially during the holidays, difficult times, it's good for all of us to be reminded of these organizations and what we can do as individuals to volunteer and help that. And where's Eric down there in the corner? You never give up on us. You're just here every occasion. And one day, you're going to maybe see all five council members showing up. I know, that would be awesome if we all make it there. I know, we, maybe we'll put it on our calendars so we can all be there. So, thank you for all you do for us. And the two callers also appreciate all the emails, the calls in regards to the boards and commissions, and we're going to be talking about them next. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, I'll start with Jeff as well. Thank you for speaking and we'll address the appointments at that time. But Holiday in the Park, man, knocked it out of the park. No pun intended. I'm really grateful. I mean, rarely do I see such an event of that magnitude run so smoothly, seamlessly, and like my colleagues have shared, no complaints, which is rare for us. So, thank you for, for all you do and all you want to continue to do. Thank you to Terry for sharing the food resources. And thank you because you have been there when I've reached out for you, for food resources as well, to share with our community. You always know where they are. I would ask Mr. City Manager, if possible, if we could share any of those resources on our social media pages.
Absolutely. I think we, we kind of do. I was going to follow up with our Public Information Officer. So, let me follow up and we'll definitely see what we could do.
Just popped out.
Been here the whole time. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Jonathan Jones, Public Information Office. I'm the last person to say it. I just want to piggyback on what the chief said. As someone who monitors the main city's social accounts, unprecedented, the outpouring of love from our community, from our council, it's been unprecedented. So, thank you to every single one of you. As far as the city's social media, Waste Warriors, that is a city-sponsored program, and we will work with Amy and the Recycling Center to share that. As for everything else, if it's, if it's city-sponsored, city-endorsed, we will absolutely share it. And we'll be in touch and we'll follow up with the speaker.
And can we share government-sponsored, like, resources?
Which we have done during the fires and all that good stuff.
Great. If we could share.
Not good stuff, excuse me. The information was good.
Yes, there you go.
There I go.
See, PIO always knows how to spin. But to the speaker's point with, with the loss of SNAP benefits and then the return, and then the very slow return.
Yes, and we've been sharing Food Bank information through the county and all that good stuff.
Great, thank you. And I think if we all see anything, we can send it. PIO's right to share. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. And then, thank you, Mr. Hawke, for the update and thank you for the kind words. I appreciate seeing your certificate with the band. A lot of love went into that. So, thank you for sharing it and congratulations again on the milestone. Let's see. And then, oh, I did want to address, thank you, Councilor Anthony, about the tribe's recognition. You know, Native American Heritage Month is important for me for obvious reasons. But, but there's something that's, that's more important to me, which is, I know I'm the first Indigenous person to serve on this dais, but to me, that doesn't just mean like, great, I'm here, the end. I thought it was important to build those partnerships with the First People of our land, who are here, who are doing a lot of great community work, who would like for a lot of the history that they teach within the tribe to be taught at our schools. They would like for their students to be able to come to the Verdugo Hills and work with our Parks and Recreation to have events, to till the soil, to do a lot of really cool projects. And so, that's kind of where that came from. And so, I was really honored when President Ortega asked for a meeting with me because he was like, oh, one of us is up there. So, it was, it was really a great meeting. We had a great partnership and I hope to continue it because there's so much more work to be done. So, thank you for that. And the last thing I will say is, gosh, this is probably the most somber council meeting that I have run and will run in my tenure as, as mayor. And boy, is that humbling. And I will say it, it's humbling and it's fitting because there's a lot of feelings around what's in the room. And I think the theme of tonight, from Nat to, of course, Officer Spike, has been the theme of service and sacrifice. And I think we see a lot of that here. And I really appreciate all of the men and women who, who put their life on the line. Like the chief mentioned, it's not an easy job. And days and weeks like the ones we've had make it harder. So, I'm incredibly grateful to all of you for what you do. And, and my thoughts keep going back to, back to his partner, his family. And I continue to just be grateful to the community who, who not only finds ways and not only shares thoughts and prayers, asks, what can we do? And we've seen it with this incident. We've seen it with the fires. We've seen it with the loss of SNAP benefits. Burbank asks, what can we do? How can we help? And for that, even though this is a very somber meeting, that's my light of hope. I'm eternally grateful for a community that stands up and asks, how can I help? So, thank you, everybody. All right, we now move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight on the consent calendar. Item one is approval of the city council minutes of the regular meeting of November eighteenth, 2025. Item two is adoption of resolutions approving the establishment of the salary and conflict of interest code designation for the classifications of Cultural Affairs Supervisor and Urban Forester, and adoption of a resolution approving the citywide salary schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. How are you still eating food?
We just had Thanksgiving dinner before the meeting, so.
So, I have a motion and a second. Let's call the roll. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizotti?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez? Yes. Thank you.
I'm going to my mom's on Thursday. Greek Thanksgiving is huge, so I got to like build up a tolerance.
You're pre-gaming?
Pre-gaming.
All right, consent calendar passes. And we move on to the next item. We have three reports to council this evening, and after staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the very brief presentation, only if they have not done so during the general public comment. Please be sure to submit your cards now if you would like to speak. And no cards will be accepted following staff's presentation. The first report to council tonight is an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission for an unexpired term. I welcome City Clerk, Ms. Kimberly Clark, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I will be presenting reports to council, item number one. On September nineteenth, 2025, the City Clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission for an unexpired term ending July thirty-first, 2027, which was created by the resignation of Commissioner Jared Kabagnola. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following channels. The city's website, city council meeting announcements, social media platforms managed by the City Clerk's office, press releases sent to the Burbank Leader, and my Burbank.com, notices posted on the City Hall Bulletin Board, community groups and organizations, and through constant contact email notifications. The deadline to submit applications to the City Clerk's office was Monday, October twentieth, 2025, at five o'clock PM. The City Clerk's office received a total of seven applications for the commission. Terry Friedman, Douglas Carlson, Scott Laster, Cameron Edinburgh, Darren Albert, Corey Mensing, and Ken Adams. The applications are listed in the order received. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
We will go to the public comment and then we will come back for any council questions. All right, I have three comment cards, and so you each get three minutes. Our first speaker is Cameron Edinburgh, followed by Corey Mensing. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, honorable members of the council. My name is Cameron Edinburgh, and I join you today to present myself as a candidate for the vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission. As a Burbank homeowner and a San Fernando Valley native who grew up enjoying Burbank's parks, green spaces, community events, and tree-lined neighborhoods, I'm proud of the city's award-winning sustainable initiatives. I hope to build upon this legacy on the commission by advising the council on ways to implement the sustainable solutions that are so critical to this continued progress. Solutions that involve accelerating building decarbonization, expanding active transit and urban greening, and inviting zero-emission pilots to our communities. I believe the Sustainable Burbank Commission should be a primary vehicle to advance not just environmental stewardship, but also long-term economic prosperity for the people of Burbank. Pursuing, pursuing this desired end state won't be easy. Our city faces tough decisions ahead relating to population density, increased demand on our electrical grid, and affordability challenges that make fossil fuels and petroleum-based consumer products more attractive than eco-friendly alternatives. In these cases and many more, our city leaders must be lockstep in their commitment to deliver sustainable solutions that will uplift our communities. It would be an honor to play a role in shaping this goal. Having previously served as a Marine Corps officer, a congressional staffer on Capitol Hill, and currently as the Director of Communications and Public Affairs for the L.A. Kleensack Incubator, I'm well-equipped to serve the city in support of sustainable growth that leaves no citizen, no resident behind. I'm personally committed to the task of engaging the community on topics relating to sustainability while increasing public information around the many wonderful existing programs that already are around to support our residents. We need bold action and shrewd leadership to move these priorities forward. And it is with this in mind that I humbly seek your support for the vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and thank you for your service. Thank you for your comment, and thank you for your service.
Our next speaker is Corey Mensing, followed by Terry Friedman.
Hello again, council. I wanted to thank you for your support this past summer and for considering me again. Since then, I've had many more meetings resulting in incremental improvements in these areas. My raison d'etre is exactly the same, to help as many people as possible and improve quality of life for Burbank residents. When I was in school, I studied No Impact Man, Zero Waste Home, and our seminar were chest-high waiters cleaning up the river, and we were discussing what the world might be like, well, now. So, a lot of time has passed. And today, among other things, in my weekly rounds, I glove up and I check our bins for contamination. I've pulled out complete wall clocks, candles, shoes, so many plastic bags. As frustrating as that sounds, it's actually just information and signals the strong desire to reduce waste. It's also impossible for me to judge the good intentions. I would be interested in seeing a highlight reel of the faces I made when I was pulling that stuff out, though. That's just a small sample of Burbank. It's exactly who I hope to engage in sustainability. I am acutely aware that I am dialed in at Holiday in the Park, which I also took the shuttle, which was awesome, from downtown. I aced Athens Where It Goes quiz, and then I invited them to my building for a tour, which you did earlier today. But I want to reach those who haven't made this a large part of their identity. My goal is accessibility, removing barriers to entry, and especially ease in engaging in our sustainability measures. Like in all categories, every time I've come up here, I want Burbank to be the best, and the gold standard other cities look to. I have more time left, so I can add this. So, tonight was the second time I've heard about the local oak trees, because Marissa left, but I went to her fantastic tree workshop. So, and I asked the question, "What was Burbank like before, like, development?", and it was oak trees. So, I appreciated hearing that again tonight. So, I think anytime we can protect and, where possible, restore the natural world is very important. So, I'd be honored to serve on the Sustainable Burbank Commission and contribute to the work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, and I too would like to see that slideshow. Our next speaker and our last speaker is Terry Friedman. Welcome, Terry. You have three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Tagahashi, councilmembers Mullins, Anthony, Rosati, staff, and viewers at home. My name is Terry Friedman, and I have applied, reapplied for the new opening on the Sustainable Burbank Commission. First, a little bit about my background, which also in front of you are some highlights of my recent achievements. I am a small business owner here in Burbank. I operate both in the food industry and the physical onset production sector, both which currently lack representation on our Sustainable Burbank Commission. Also, after completing the Waste Warriors program in 2024, I began immediately attending the SBC meetings and have been attending for the past year and a half. I also am currently working with the recycle center to host a stakeholder meeting for people who are impacted by footwear choices on film production. And it's something that we're going to be hosting at my union hall in Burbank in the new year. I'm very excited about. I also personally help facilitate the reallocation and rescue of thousands of pounds of food into our community from leftover catering from film production that goes to serve our food insecure. And also, I want to share just a little success story as someone who's an ordinary but driven community member. In October, so last month, I was attending the Sustainable Burbank Commission meeting, as I do, and I, for the first time, decided to stop being on the sidelines and actually speak during public comment. And I raised an observation about how our city parks lack available and consistent beverage container recycling. Now, for places where people gather to host parties, to exert a tremendous amount of physical activity, it seemed an oversight to not have a very ordinary service. And since then, I attended the Parks and Rec Board meeting, and I presented that observation to them to inquire for more information. I then followed up at this month's Sustainable Burbank Commission meeting and followed up again, asking if there was a way that they could liaise with the Parks and Rec Department, which a commissioner then agendized. So, it was from my work as an ordinary citizen to just speak up during public comment, like I am right now, that I was able to impact direct change. It was not only something that was implemented to the 2025 to 2026 work plan, it was also then agendized for next month's Sustainable Burbank Commission meeting to have a follow-up, which the recycle center said they would reach out to Parks and Rec to get some more information about. That was actually one of two different items that I was able to get implemented into the 2025-2026 Sustainable Burbank Commission work plan, just by speaking up as an ordinary citizen like I am today. But it is my hope that, as a commissioner, I would be able to be more empowered to create more change, implement more ideas, and help make Burbank a better city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. There being no further speakers, we will now move on to, any council questions? Seeing none, I believe we're ready to move on to the vote. Madam City Clerk?
I will call the names in order, and let's see a show of hands. Terry Friedman. Douglas Carlson. Scott Laster. Cameron Edinburgh. Darren Albert. Corey Mensing. Ken Adams. Terry Friedman is appointed. Congratulations.
If it's all right, City Clerk, I'd make it unanimous. It's okay.
All right. Congratulations, Terry. Very quickly, I do want to say, I know we have two other folks in the audience who also applied. We can only pick one of you, but you both are phenomenal. You've applied before, Corey, and you have a lot, a lot of experience under your belt. And although this is the first time, at least for me, that I'm meeting you, you sound like you have a lot of experience, too, and we would love to see you on one of our commissions. So, there are other boards and commissions. Please apply. And I'd love to share this, because if it encourages you at all, I'm the mayor of the city, and the first time I applied for a commission, I did not get it. So, please continue to apply, and then we'd love to have you serve on one of our boards and commissions. I'm going to go to the vice mayor, and if you have something quick to say, brief.
Yeah. Thank you for saying that. I was going to reflect a similar sentiment. And also, please don't let this stop you from being involved in this area of sustainability, that even if you didn't, and this is for those maybe who are watching who weren't selected as well, if you weren't chosen, please come to the meetings and participate and be involved, because we need all of you. So, thank you for applying. Thank you for being interested in participating in sustainability in the city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Brief.
I just want to say very quickly, Mr. Edinburgh, very rarely do I walk in not knowing who I'm going to support. I look through the resumes, I do interviews, I look at their past. I know Ms. Friedman, I know Mr. Mensing very well. Your resume, your presentation, your speech, very impressive. Please, please come back and apply again. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Very impressive. Because we haven't seen you before, this is the first time, you know, you've joined us here. We received a lot of emails and your support. Also, I want to acknowledge the others who didn't come tonight, but we did receive emails from them. Every single one in here, this was very tough. Excellent resumes that we have before us, and it's frustrating, because you can only pick one person. All of you have done a really good job, including the ones that we received emails from. So, thank you. Continue applying, and we'll see you here again, hopefully, soon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are now moving on to our second report to council tonight, which is an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Art in Public Places Committee for an unexpired term. I welcome City Clerk, Ms. Kimberly Clark, to please present the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On September 23rd, 2025, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the Art in Public Places Committee for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2028, which was created by the resignation of Member Heather Owens. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following channels: the city's website, city council meeting announcements, social media platforms managed by the city clerk's office, press releases sent to Burbank Leader and my Burbank, notices posted on the city hall bulletin board, community groups and organizations, and through the sending of constant contact email notifications. The deadline to submit applications for this position to the city clerk's office was Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, at 5:00 PM. The city clerk's office received a total of five applications for the committee: Tom O'Neill, Jenna Van Lu, Jeff Ferguson, Pamela Pyle, and Maureen Moore. The applications were listed in the order in which they were received. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions and allow our speakers.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We have two speakers on this item, so you each will get three minutes. First, we have Pam Pyle, followed by Douglas Carlson. Welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff, thank you so much for the time today. I'll try not to take the full three minutes because of the fact that I'm standing between you and probably preparations for Thanksgiving. But I just wanted to say, man, I don't envy you tonight, because the candidates that you had for the last position, and I also took a look at my competition for this position with the applications and resumes, and I know it must be a very difficult decision, very difficult to make, because you have a lot of good folks. This is my first time applying for a position, so I understand that I may or may not make it. But I just wanted to say what I think I might bring to the arts in public places. Instead of me just considering myself, I would like to really find out what the citizens of Burbank are interested in with regard to art, and to make sure that all of our citizens are represented in their own way, or they see themselves in the artwork, because I truly believe in inclusion, and I truly believe that everybody should have a voice in order to express themselves. And I'll also say, I love Burbank. It is like my favorite place in the world. I've been here for 29 years as a Burbank resident, and I expect to spend 29-plus more. And I appreciate everything that we have as far as art goes. This was such an amazing journey for me, living here, raising my daughter here, and then I also had the opportunity to be a part of the RISE program. We had Marcia, I'm sorry, Marissa Garcia here earlier today. And, man, what an amazing program that was. Marissa, her staff, Grace, Paula, Megan, Lorena are just phenomenal people. And I would recommend anyone might want to take a look at RISE, because it truly is, and it set me up for really wanting to be involved in my passion. So, I see I have, what, 38 seconds left? And so, I really am standing between you. I will end it with that and just say, thank you so much, whatever decision you make. I know that it'll be a great one, and I appreciate, again, your time and for your service to the city of Burbank.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker and final speaker for this item is Douglas Carlson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. So, I was actually here applying for the Sustainability Commission, and it's fine. It's okay. But I did still want to take my time to thank you. I was before you in July, asking for staff to be looking at maximizing our usage for our public pools. So, thank you for your support, and particularly for Marissa Garcia and Diego Gavellas for the changes that they made, making the pools more available for people to utilize specifically for lap swimming, but just making them more useful throughout the day. So, I recently had back surgery, and it was because of the changes that the staff made allowed me to swim seven to 10 miles a week in preparation for that surgery. So, just a huge contribution to my well-being. So, I just wanted to thank you very much for listening and for the differences, and I just love living in our city, where we do have the opportunity to come before council, make contributions, and participate. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. All right. There being no further public comment, we move on to the vote.
Again, I will read the names, and let's see a show of hands for your vote. Tom O'Neill. Jenna Van Lu. Jeff Ferguson. Jeff Ferguson is appointed. Congratulations, if you're still here.
Congratulations, Jeff. And I will say, I don't know if this is second or third, but multiple times a charm, third times a charm. Congratulations. And, you know, to other folks who may have applied, folks with your first time, sometimes takes a few times. So, I appreciate your tenacity. You've been there. And we definitely want to see you go from the RISE program onto something else soon. All right. Let's move on. Our last report to council this evening is an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Infrastructure Oversight Board for an unexpired term. Madam City Clerk, welcome back.
Still Kimberly Clark, City Clerk? Good evening again. Tonight, I will present the final report on the council item number three. On September 23rd, 2025, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the Infrastructure Oversight Board for an expired, unexpired term ending July 31st, 2027, which was created by the resignation of Board Member Jean Shanberger. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the same channels that I enumerated earlier. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office was Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, at 5:00 PM. The city clerk's office received a total of two applications for the board. One was from Armand Matavosian, and the other was from Lori Sterns. The applications were listed in the order in which they were received. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We have one public comment card. You will get three minutes. Come on down, Lori Sterns. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Lori Sterns. I'm a lifelong resident of Burbank. This is my first time applying to serve on a city board, and I'd like to share, sorry, a few reasons why I feel compelled to submit my application. I love this city. I love being a homeowner here. I loved raising my sons, two of which are in the audience here today. I love my neighbors, the police department, the fire department, the community events we host, sorry, our libraries, our parks, recreation programs, the adult school, and the incredible services we offer to our seniors, and I can't imagine calling any other place home. Professionally, I'm not an engineer or an architect, but I've spent my career leading large-scale project management efforts. In those roles, I learned how to coordinate complex teams, manage multimillion-dollar budgets, anticipate risk before they became problems, and deliver projects designed to serve people safely and reliably for many years. Sorry. Those experiences taught me something essential. Infrastructure is more than concrete, steel, or plans on paper. It's the backbone of a healthy, thriving community, and that belief is what brings me here tonight. I'm at a point in my life when giving back to my city, the city where I grew up, my sons grew up, and my grandchildren will continue to grow, is deeply important to me. Burbank is a special place, and helping ensure its long-term resilience is not just a professional interest, it's a personal commitment. If I'm selected for this committee, I would focus on three key pillars. First, safety. My background in risk assessment and compliance gives me a strong safety-first mindset. Second, sustainability. Burbank is known for its forward-thinking approach to environmental responsibility. I want to continue that legacy by supporting infrastructure decisions that work for today while being responsible for tomorrow, reducing strain on resources, advancing green practices, and planning with climate realities in mind. Third, long-term planning. Infrastructure decisions made today shape a city for decades. My experience managing large, long-horizon projects has taught me how to balance immediate needs with future impact, ensuring that investments are wise, transparent, and equitable. Above all, my goal is to be a collaborator, someone who listens to residents, values diverse perspectives. Above all, my goal is to be a collaborator, someone who listens to residents, values diverse perspectives, and helps bridge community needs with practical, realistic solutions. I want to help ensure Burbank remains a community people are proud to call home. I want to give a thank you to my family that showed up in my support tonight. And I want to thank you all for considering my application. It would be an honor to serve, and I'm ready to bring my experience, my dedication, and my heart for the city to the information, or I'm sorry, Infrastructure Oversight Committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, and write on the money. All right, there being no further public comment, we now, council question?
I just wanted to ask, for I. O. B., is Lori allowed to bring her granddaughter to the meetings? Because...
I don't see why not.
Okay, all right, perfect, great.
All right, let's take a vote.
Okay, we have two people. The first one, Armand Matavosian, and the second, Lori Sterns. Lori Sterns is appointed. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And can I say it's very touching that you brought your whole family with you tonight? Thank you, guys, for supporting her. Especially your granddaughter. For those of us at home, you can't see, we got a wave. All right, congratulations. That's our last report to council this evening. We will now hear council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conference, regional meetings, and community events. And although Pam was very nice in saying she was the thing between us and our turkey, she is not. It is all of us. So, whoever is the slowest one, I will dump water on your head. Who would like to go first?
I'll be real quick. I went to Holiday in the Park. I think everybody attended. And I also went to the Winter Wine Walk the Saturday after. Very well-attended. People enjoyed that, and the band was awesome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Rosati.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, November nineteenth, I attended the Police Commission meeting. On Friday, November twenty-first, I attended Holiday in the Park, had a great time. Councilmember Anthony and I participated in a live podcast. We kept looking out for Mr. McDougal, see if he was going to peek around the corner. We had a nice...
We have a recording of that. We can play it if you want.
We had a nice robust, robust conversation and a lot of fun. On Saturday, November twenty-second, I also attended the Winter Wine Walk. That looked to be very successful and well-participated. On Sunday, the twenty-third, I went to the Parks First Annual Power Soccer Adaptive Sports Tournament, and that was just amazing, just amazing, and everyone had a great time. And the good news is, both teams won because it was a tie. And then last night, I was at the Glendale Salvation Army, served dinner to the Burbank Boys and Girls Club. Both Councilmember Anthony and I were both attended that as well, and that was very well-attended, and apparently the food was good? Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Who would like to go next?
I had seconds that evening, too, so...
That's added to your time. Councilmember Mullins.
Really quick, with everything else that everybody's been attending, Police Commission meeting, good discussion. The chief introduced his plan for the upcoming year. And if you have not seen it, it's really good to go online and watch the police plan for the upcoming, for twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mullins. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
All right. On Thursday, I attended the Valley Economic Alliance Board Meeting in the morning, and then right after that, I hopped over to the Y. M. C. A. for their Thursday food distribution and helped them out with that. And then later that evening, I attended Assemblymember Nick Schultz's annual Holiday Open House, where they collected food. So, I did both sides of the process that same day. And then on Friday, Holiday in the Park, with everyone else, but I didn't see any of you, so I don't, where were you? I don't know. Really? And then today, I took, this is very interesting, I took a tour of the Burbank Operable Unit, where all of our water gets pumped into from the Colorado River, or most of it, not all, most of it, and showed how we treat it and then how it gets distributed to the rest of the city. So, if you have not done that tour yet, highly recommend it. It's very, very informative, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Takahashi. All right, on Thursday, November twentieth, I attended the Valley Economic Alliance Board Meeting with the Vice Mayor. And then last Friday, I had the honor of attending the Creative Talent Expo's ribbon-cutting and opening ceremony. They highlight animation here in the animation capital of the world. And I met with the mayor of Orretza, our sister city, for lunch. Very nice. He was flying in, so we had, we grabbed a quick bite. No, no, for brunch. He shows me their culture, I show him ours. Brunch. And then, like, all of you attended Holiday in the Park, between thirty to fifty thousand people, so yeah, I didn't get to see any of y'all. But thank you for letting me give folks a welcome. I really appreciated it, and it was great to see so many fellow Mag Park folks there. Okay, and then on today, I attended a press conference with Congresswoman Friedman discussing funding for safety and accessibility for different transit projects throughout the nation, including metro. So, we're very excited to see safer, cleaner, more accessible buses and other modes of transportation in the future. And now we're here. All right. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? And this Thanksgiving staff was thankful for that. All right, we now adjourn the meeting in Nat Rubenfield's memory to Tuesday, December ninth, twenty twenty-five, for a joint city council meeting in the council chamber, two seven five East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you, Burbank. Have a lovely holiday and spend a wonderful time with your families. Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.